All right, thank you, everyone. We're going to call our meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance And I apologize for our late start. We had a work session that went over. I know people are excited to get to the Patriots game, so we'll try to move as quickly as we can this evening. So, we have our approval of minutes for the September 16th, 2019 executive session.
Simo.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. We have motion to approve the September 16th, 2019 regular meeting minutes.
Simo.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Our next item is the consent agenda. Is there any item that someone would like withdrawn from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Simo.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 13 is a motion to adopt a resolution amending the official list of parking restrictions and regulations in the town of Narragansett in accordance with the Narragansett Code of Ordinances to restrict parking on Anna Olivo Court.
Simo.
Second.
Discussion. This is reaction to complaints in that area. Do people have any questions for the chief on this?
I do have a question, yeah.
Okay.
Just one. Couple of questions for your chief.
Thank you. How do you guys decide typically, in this case as well, which side of the street to make no parking when you make this ordinance?
When I received the complaint, I sent it over to the Police Department's Traffic Safety Work Group, right, a group of officers plus a representative, deputy director of the Highway Department, has a seat on the committee as well. And they studied the issue and they come back with the recommendation. So, in this particular instance, their recommendation was to go the west side.
Okay, so that's the process, I guess. But did they give a reason why it was that side?
That was from their findings. The recommendation was to restrict on one side. They specifically did mention the west side. I didn't see any objection from documentation I had.
Okay. And I see that there's a petition from the neighbors, basically the residents in that area.
Yeah.
Jesse, usually it's based on which side of the street the US postal boxes are placed. So, what we do is they coincide their restriction with the same side that the postal boxes are on, so people aren't parked in front of them.
Thank you. All right, that makes sense. So, the process here, you know, with neighborhood would be to start with the petition, right? And then if there's a majority in favor of the new ordinance, you guys would follow? Does that happen?
Yeah, there was a petition done. We request that for all these parking complaints now.
So, if, for whatever reason down the line, a few years from now, if there is a reason or if there was a desire by residents to change it back so it's parking on both sides, they could do it through the same process, petition process?
Yes, anything, any resolution that changes the ordinance in any way can be changed out the road. That's happened many times in different areas.
Okay, thank you.
Those who would look at the public safety aspects of it as well.
Yes, that's why.
You can have some desire for a restriction or lifting of a restriction, but it may not be in the best interest for other reasons. That's part of the reason.
That's correct.
You go down and look at it. Police Department will go down and look at it.
That's why we can do an entire package. So, you get the public safety documentation and you also get the petition to show the community support. So, it's a combination of two factors.
Thanks, Chief.
Just a procedural piece to this. Most of these changes to parking restrictions, not most, all are ordinance changes. So, there's a first and second reading. So, we're going to vote on this as a resolution, but the first reading will come in two weeks. And our clerk and the police chief will work on the language regarding that. But it would be an amendment to our parking restrictions and that would have a first and second reading. Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 14 is a motion to approve the request from the Now River Preservation Association for their annual NRPA road race to be held on Saturday, May 9th, 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., subject to approval of state and local regulations.
Simo.
Second.
Discussion. Any council members? Any questions for our Parks and Rec Director?
Just to reiterate, because I know everyone's sensitive to the road races, this is not an addition, Steve Wright. This is an annual road race, not one more. There you go.
Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 15 is a motion to approve the request from the Rhode Island State Police for their annual 5K foot pursuit road race to be held on Sunday, April 26th, 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., subject to approval of state and local regulations.
Simo.
Second.
Any comments from the council?
Same thing, Steve. Annual.
Any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 16 is a motion to approve the request from the Parks and Recreation Department, the Narragansett Lions Club, and the Narragansett Chamber of Commerce to host a second endless summer festival to be held on Saturday, September 26th, 2020, from 12:00 noon to 6:00 p.m. at Narragansett Town Beach, subject to approval of state and local regulations.
Simo.
Second.
Discussion. So, this was a successful first-time event, so thank you for the partnership between those three organizations. And I'm just chuckling because it is so far, it's kind of far away, but it's for September of 2020, but we have the date in the book, so that's great. Anybody from the council?
Steve, are there any changes other than the date to this application? None? Okay.
And anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. A motion to approve the one-year contract extension for rubbish removal beach division with Joe Harvey Landscaping in the amount of $49,480.44 under the same terms and conditions as the original bid.
Simo.
Second.
Discussion. Anybody from the council? Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Number eight, item 18 is a motion to approve the purchase of 24 replacement encoder reader transmitters for customer water meters from Stiles Company in the amount of $5,520.
Simo.
Second.
Discussion. Any comments from the council?
Yes, I do have a question. Would be for John, the town engineer. I'll wait for you to come up.
Thanks for coming up. Are these the remote transmitters that were kind of under discussion at the annual budget meeting, which allow the employees to read the meters from completely remotely?
No, they're not. These are replacements for the existing system. We haven't looked into that yet, but it's time. We are in the process of looking at the new, whole new system for a fixed read system. These are remote read where we still have to go live with the equipment and physically record the reading from each location. You have to be in close proximity to it. So, we have existing meters where the heads fail. If we're going to put a replacement, we're talking about to maintain the system right now, so this is maintenance of existing equipment.
Great, so not new technology?
And not new technology.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Any members of the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 19 is a motion to introduce, read, pass, and accept as a first reading in ordinance and amendment of Chapter 78, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled Utilities, Water Rates, and Charges.
Simo.
Second.
Discussion. So, this is a first reading of the, regarding the water rate, changes to the water rate. So, I'm going to ask the engineer to come back up. If he could give us a brief summary. This was discussed during our budget process, but if he could just give a brief summary on the baseline amounts and then the excess amounts, that would be helpful.
It's good evening, again. Yes, as we presented at the budget hearings, we're looking for an increase from the base rates for the different meter class charges to 340 to 6,000, depending on the meter size, and then also an increase to the annual usage. We had an independent rate study that was conducted to support the conclusion of the internal rate assessment, and those conclusions were that we cannot continue to borrow from the enterprise fund or the end of the fund balance to support the operation. So, Suez has had a few rate increases in the past. One last October that was after our most recent rate increase, and North Kingstown is in the process of considering a rate increase. So, in order to maintain our enterprise fund and to support staff and functions and all the maintenance that we have to do with the system, and also maintain insurance for the underground pipe networks, which aren't insured by our, by the trust or can't insure through the old insurance, we need to maintain that enterprise fund. So, and again, that's kind of in a nutshell. We have three different tiered classes for the rate, consumption rates. The first 6,000 cubic feet are part of the base charge, and different base charges depending on what size meter you have for your service. And then there's after each, up to 6,950 cubic feet is another charge for per cubic feet, and the same above 9,500 to 13,000 cubic feet. And then above that is a single rate that from there to if you use hundreds of thousands of cubic feet. And that's the fees that we're really, the rates at this time.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council? Any questions or comments from the public? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 20 is a motion to approve the replacement of one firefighter due to a retirement.
Simo.
Second.
Discussion. Jim?
To replace an existing firefighter that just retired, Matthew Shea.
Thank you for your service to the town. And what's his effective retirement date?
One date last week, I'm not sure exactly.
All right, great. All right. Any questions from the council? Any comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item number 21 is a motion to introduce, read, pass, and accept as a first reading in ordinance and amendment of Chapter 14, Article 11 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled Peddlers, Solicitors, and Itinerant Vendors to Comply with the Rhode Island General Assembly's Passage of 2018 S-2502B, which established regulation of mobile food establishments.
Simo.
Second.
Discussion. So, this is an ordinance change. It's essentially a package of ordinance changes. One is because we have ordinances governing peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant vendors, we now need to also include a food truck at ordinance on that end. That'd be a fourth kind of category, and if I misstate any of this, I'm going to ask Terry to fix it for me. And we're also looking at as an event, a license, as opposed to individual licenses for events. And the benefit to that is the clerk's office can give for one of these larger events, one event license, and then it's up to the event coordinator then to go and then figure out who they're going to have in their project. And so, that's the difference instead of having 20 or 25 individual licenses. So, that's that. Are there any comments from the council on that? Any comments from the public? All right, so this is a first reading of this ordinance. So, this will be on for a second reading. Is there anything you'd like to add?
The only thing that I, is sort of to address you from here.
Please do, yeah.
The only thing that I would ask the council to consider is whether or not they would be setting limits on mobile food enterprises. Right now, the ordinance provides for a limit of 10 peddlers, and the food trucks used to be considered within that category. They'll now be a separate category, so the council will need to decide if they want to continue to limit peddlers at 10, and if they want a separate limit for food trucks or have one or none.
Where would that number be in this ordinance for the food trucks? Would you like, and the question would be if we want to make that amendment now or if we would do that down the road? Is it necessary to do it now?
You don't need to establish a limit now. That's not required.
That's good. So, one option we could have if Steve Wright in the future wants to increase the amount of food trucks at the beach and so, we can do that. And at that time, sometime, you have a sprint table to that, Terry? If you want to increase.
Well, right now, the way the food truck operation at the beach is conducted, that's not considered part of the 10-peddler limit. The 10-peddler limit is the food truck push cart kind of operations that you see on the street, not in the beach parking lot as part of that event.
Okay, thank you.
So, with this ordinance, the way it's written right now, if we don't make any changes, there would be no limit to, is that correct?
To the mobile food enterprises.
Correct. Unless we decide to limit it.
That's correct.
Okay.
I think it's 14-403, Terry. Is that correct?
You are correct.
So, if everyone can see, there's a yellow highlight there. So, if we wanted to tonight, peddlers are at 10, we could put food trucks at 10 if we wanted to, but that's up to you guys. Right now, there's no limit. So, you could even...
The one at the beach event is one at six.
Right.
I think, I'd like to take some more time to think about it because it's obviously a logistic issue around town as well.
So, you can continue the first read or you can make that change at the second reading?
Make change at the second reading?
But do we then need to redo, we'd have to redo this, we'd have to another reading? Do we have to amend it, Terry?
Any food trucks are there now? Want to fly a mobile food truck?
Well, this will be a little new. So, currently, the, the, unless we're limited to 10, we issue 10 year-round, every year. Every year, we have a waiting list, and if any of the 10 do not renew, we conduct a lottery of those who have an application on file and pick however many we have for openings. Contact them and see if they're still interested. So, the last few years, there has been turnover. There's been two or three new ones, two to 10 every year, but we don't have a waiting list of like 10 or 20.
It's not a waiting on a bill, right?
No.
What do you figure, that maybe a couple of people get turned down, three, eight?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we just go 12? 12 food trucks?
Fine.
The market dictate, if they're the last one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I think there might be a misunderstanding. So, the limitation of 10 right now on peddler's license includes those food trucks. So, if you pull out, if you say there's going to be 12 food trucks, now you have 10 peddler's license and 12 food trucks. It went from 10 to 22.
Right.
So, if you want to increase it a little, what you should do is figure out how many food trucks you want to have licensed, granted every year, reduce that number from the peddlers or a substantial portion of that number from the peddlers, and then create this separate category.
Well, we don't have a lot of peddlers. I don't see people selling balloons and stuff on there. I mean, how many peddlers do we have?
Well, right now, the definition, it is catch-all. And that's one of the major changes.
Well, besides food trucks, are there any peddlers?
A couple. They're, you know, if you think about, like at the Festival of Lights, there's a peddler with like clothessticks, you know, not food items, but there are very few.
Then you peddle at six, food trucks twelve.
So, I'll just, my position on this would be, not the overall full amendment, but for the limit, I would, I'm of the mind to have no limit for the food trucks, so that's my position.
Open range.
I can hear what you said, Justin.
He said no limit on the food trucks.
So, that's just my position on it.
So, basically, if you put in a limit, you might revisit it if you think it gets unwieldy. If you don't put in a limit, then there's all these food truck operators, and if it gets unwieldy, you're going to have a mechanism. So, I, you know, I don't know what people's, you know, we could continue and have the thought process about amending it. If we amend it next time, then it's another second reading. So, I didn't mean to open up this pen door, but it was blank, so it was blank.
We still approve each permit individually, though, correct? Is that correct, that we would approve the permits?
Yes.
So, if we decided that we're now at a point where we think there's too many food trucks in town, or we want to, we don't have to approve each one?
Well, without a limit, I would think that, you know, what in the ordinance would we be able to stand on to refuse slices?
What's the reason? I got you.
Terry, I also saw that South Kingstown was taking a look at any type of amplification that we might have. Do we have that in our ordinance?
We don't currently. That's included in the draft. That's before you know. Customer signaling devices, amplification.
So, right now, the peddlers are kind of everything, so go ahead, Ray.
So, if we don't decide this tonight, it's not going to affect anybody coming right up in the next month.
No, the time element is that the state statute that was passed to institute mobile food enterprise licenses requires municipalities to implement their changes to coincide with the state law by January 1st.
Sounds like another whole island shake down.
So, if we have six food trucks at the beach, maybe we should go with six on this and see what happens. If she gets a huge demand, she lets us down. If you get a huge demand, then we can always up it, but that way we'll have it up there.
Down, yeah.
Yeah, but there's other people, you know, that can't get into the beach that have food trucks in a compound, Narragansett, and the ice cream guy, you know, folks like that.
So, do you want the 12?
I think 12. And if that gets unbelievable, you can always knock it down.
All right, so why don't you make an amendment for 12?
I know they'll may make the food truck cap at 12.
That, this is the food truck. This is 14.403, would be it. Would we, the permits that may be issued by the town shall be 12, unless changing our majority vote of the council. Is there a second for that? All right, discussion on that. All right, anyone from the public? All right, seeing none, that will be a first reading with that amendment. Terry, so you have a, go ahead.
Okay, so then my remaining question was with regard to existing section 14-371. Peddlers are currently limited to 10. Would you leave that at 10 or would you reduce that?
I don't have the peddlers at 6.
Do we have 10 currently right now?
It sounds like we don't.
We do, but that includes food trucks.
But the real peddlers of Luna is that that's about two. Okay, that sounds good.
So, we want to, so this will be an amendment of 14.371 from 10 to 6. All right, is that, do I, is that your amendment?
Yes.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right, discussion on that. So, now we're going to be with, this is going to have, we're going to have 10 food trucks, six peddlers. If that's our maximum.
12, 12, 12. 12 food trucks.
Did I say 10? I'm sorry, 12, there'll be 12 food trucks, six peddlers. All right. I just want to summarize for everybody. It's going to be confusing because the peddlers are a catch-all right now, and now they're going to be delineated from the food trucks.
Right, they will be tough to find differently in the ordinance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero with those amendments.
Thank you.
It's a little after 8 o'clock, so we're going to move to our public hearing. Make sure that our steno is prepared. So, first is a motion to hold a public hearing to consider the submittal of a request for 2019 community development block grant in the amount up to $75,000 from the state set aside for local housing rehabilitation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion to open the public hearing, approve five to zero. We're going to start with Mr. DeLuca. This is a CDPG process which some of us have experienced before, so Mr. DeLuca is going to present a summary for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I'll try to be brief, but I do need to provide a little bit of explanation so that we can keep our heads clear on this, and believe me, I need it as much as anyone. The CDPG program used to be a program that came around once a year. It was on a schedule, usually early, mid-spring, and the applications would be coming in from nonprofit agencies like the Johnny Gates Center and others like that. And they had to complete the programs and projects for housing rehabilitation. So, a few years ago, the state decided, the state of the province of housing and community development, decided to separate those two things. The projects that go through, that, I mean, this is kind of the program that focuses on public services and facilities, remains a cyclical application program that you will hear about again in the springtime. But what we have this time of year is a separate program for the housing rehabilitation set aside. So, tonight, what we're doing is holding the hearing to consider the submittal of a request to the state for up to $75,000. What is interesting about this is that the application will, itself will show a $0 amount in the request, but will indicate that the town is intent on distributing up to $75,000 in the coming year. The reason for that is that we don't have applications, we don't solicit applications to come in before the program, like we do in the springtime program. We send out letters to Domestic Biologics Resource Center and Johnny Gates Center and others, and we try to get them to submit an application. This, in this program, it's reversed. The idea is to get an allotment to the town, ranging by the state of Rhode Island, and then, in concert with the Washington County Community Development Corporation, seek out income-qualified persons, property owners, to do rehabilitation on their homes. Jeff Marchand is here. He's a member of the board of the Washington County Community Development Corporation, and he can answer questions on program specifics if you have any. I would like to point out that he provided me a readout of recent rehab projects, and I won't give you the details of the individuals, but in 2016, we had three projects which totaled about $30,000 in expense. In 2017 and 18, we only had one each, under $15,000 each, but then this last year, we had eight programs that totaled $96,000. And what's interesting is that even though we set ourselves a cap at $75,000, should be exceeded, more of, the state will fund those applications if there is money in the account. So, what I'm asking tonight is two things. One is to open and close this hearing and approve the town staff to submit an application as I stated, and then you approve the resolution that I had provided in the packet. I would have Mr. Donovan put it in. have Mr. Donovan put in a resolution form. It's just a text document in your packet so that we can go forward with that. If there are any questions for me or Mr. Marchand, we'd be happy to field them.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions?
Mike, can you just give us a couple examples of what type of projects we're talking about that would be applying?
Let's see, I'm going to read from the readout. Things like roofs and, you know, boiler replacements, very simple, you know, the kind of things that people actually are most basic to keeping the home viable shelter for their, for their property. There are electric code issues that have been upgraded over the years, and some operating expenses that can be justified.
Thank you.
All right, are there any people here to testify regarding? If there's no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Simmed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion to close the hearing approved five to zero. Is there a motion to draft a resolution authorizing the town manager to submit an application for community development block grant HRSA funding to the town?
Simmed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion approved five to zero. And do I need a motion on the underlying or is that resolution doing for us? That doesn't? Okay, great. Is there a mo, the next hearing is a motion to hold, open, hold and open a public hearing on an application from Westlake's LLC to amend the zoning map to modify the limitation on uses for the property at seven oh seven Point Judith Road, flat Y four, lot four, zone BB and R eighty.
Simmed.
Second.
Discussion. All in, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to open the public hearing approved five to zero. The attorney for the applicant, Mr. Kenyon, is here, and so I'm going to turn it over to him.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant Westlake LLC. The applicant owns property at seven oh seven Point Judith Road. The property is twenty-two point acres in size with nineteen point two acres owned R eighty and three point six acres owned BB. The nineteen point two acres that is owned R eighty that designated as open space, the three point six acres zone BB were previously limited to certain use codes, including a gasoline service station, storage for air and sales of boats, and marine accessories, general auto motor repair, and temporary vehicle storage. It also permitted the accessory use of a convenience store, and also the sale of automobiles up to a total of thirty vehicles. The current property contained to all those uses. The applicant proposed to take an area that's currently used for automobile repair and create a coffee shop with a drive-up window. The applicant had the plans prepared and was ready to go to the zoning board for a special use permit, when we discovered that the limitations on the zoning for the property were limited to just those specific use codes. So an amendment was required to allow use code five four six one, which is a bakery and coffee shop with a drive-up window. We appeared before the planning board and received a positive recommendation, and the applicant at that time agreed to reduce the used cars from a total of thirty to five. The planning board found that the proposed change in zone was in compliance with the town's comprehensive plan that designates this for commercial use, and the proposed use as a coffee shop with a drive-up window is considered a commercial use under the zoning ordinance. If the zoning amendment is approved, the applicant would have to apply to the zoning board, go back to the planning board for a special use permit. We submitted plans that were prepared by Chris Dewham of Dupree Engineering. I have the applicant Paul Carr with me tonight. I'm going to ask him to come up now and just briefly go over the reason for the request.
Just need to get sworn in first there.
Please state your name and address.
Paul J. Carr.
Raise your hand. Are you sure they tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Nothing of the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Not very good at public speaking, a little nervous.
So Paul, are you the owner of Westlake's Bar I located at seven oh seven Point Judith Road?
Yes, I am.
How long have you owned that property?
Nineteen years.
And can you briefly describe the current operation at that property?
The current operation is truck, marine, car repair with a convenience store, which we sell coffee and, you know, bakery goods and stuff like that.
You currently sell coffee, bakery?
That's correct.
And you're not allowed to have a drive-through window under the current zoning of the property?
That's correct, that's correct.
And are you here tonight requesting the zoning map amendment to allow the coffee shop with a drive-up?
That's correct.
And will you be using the same building for the coffee shop?
That's correct. Nothing will be added onto the building using the existing structure.
What's currently in that location?
It used to be a detailed shop and another area where I would work on a truck or a car, but I'm going to eliminate that.
And when you appeared before the planning board, did you agree to reduce the number of used cars from a total of thirty down to five?
That's correct.
And will that open up a lot of space on the property?
Yes, it will.
And did you have Chris Dewham of Dupree Engineering prepare a plan showing proposed location of the drive-through window?
That's correct.
And does the proposal provide for enough car queue in to meet the town's zoning ordinance?
Yes, it does. And also a traffic study was done also.
And you understand that the council approves the zone change tonight, you still have to go back to the planning board and zoning board for the special use permit?
That's correct.
And can you explain to the council how the proposed zoning would affect your business?
Well, I, just to be more financially better for me to compete with other businesses in the area, and I've had some serious health issues in the last year and a half. I can't work like I should, provide for my family physically, so I need to, you know, use my head instead of my body a little bit more, you know, use, use the building for better financial aid, help my family than use it as it is, so. I just can't work physically like I used to anymore.
And were you the one that was doing most of the car and vehicle repair of the property?
That's correct. I am the, I'm the one, I'm the man.
I agree with you.
Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Nope. Thank you for your time, whichever way it may be. I appreciate your, your time. Thank you.
We can answer any questions of the council or the audience.
Any questions from the council?
Yep, so, so people notice, I've looked at this property, and when you look at the drive-through area that is on this property, I compared it with everything in South Kingston, near the answer, North Kingston. This property has more space than almost every drive-through in our surrounding neighborhoods of South Kingston, Charleston, North Kingston. So there's plenty of ample room here for what they would like to do. I understand Mr. Carr would like to restructure his business based on his health, and I hope it all works out for him. Behind his building, there is some storage stuff, and I think somebody made, have thought through the way it was advertised, that Mr. Carr would be developing, there's no more developing going on that I know of on this property. He's got a building back there, he has the building that he has right now. What he's looking to do is reduce it so that before, if he wanted to put thirty cars out there and have a, you know, used car area, he could sell his vehicles, he's taken that away. He wants, like I said, the vehicle reconstruct here, and, you know, for somebody to be in business nineteen years and try to do it all by themselves, it's a tough task. So I'm very much in support of being able to help his family and keep their business, and hopefully it'll go to his son. Thank you.
For clarification, the, the current area that is owned BB is three point six acres. He's not looking to expand that at all. It's simply adding the additional use code and eliminating twenty-five of the used car spots.
I guess this is probably for Jim or for Mark. Jim, I know we received an email today. I'm hoping you could expand upon the comments about the fast food innovation.
They have an answer. I spoke with Mike about that. They'd also, they'd have to come back here for any special use or any change in the zoning after that, so it wouldn't imply any of the items that he put in the attached questions.
So we're looking for a coffee shop. We're not going to be seeing Golden Arches. I mean, Rick talked about the fact that there's a very large area here. I know some people in the, in the surrounding area, they just want to make sure that that's not, and the coffee shop is one thing, but have to throw enough of Burger King's, that's at the Golden Arches too, but that's a different story.
Change in the zoning.
And isn't it true that in the answer, we cannot have any type of chain restaurants anyway? There's an ordinance against that, Mark, I believe, or John?
I'm not, I'm not aware of that specific ordinance. I'll take a look at that. We do regulate fast food in the town, but it's a different code number. And I'm going to pull it up. It'll take me two seconds.
Perfect. I just want to make sure everyone is comfortable in that because it's different.
Familiar with it. You've seen the code before. It's eleven pages worth of, of a chart, and the applicant is requesting fifty-four sixty-one, which is described as a bakery and coffee shop with drive-up window. If he wanted to do fast food, it would be fifty-eight nineteen, and right now, fifty-eight nineteen listed as fast food restaurant is prohibited in all zones.
Thank you.
So I believe the app, in order to do that, the applicant will not only need a zoning map amendment, he needs a zoning ordinance amendment.
All right, are there any other comments or questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for you. Just to get an understanding of how this would be set up, would this coffee shop be connected through a common entrance to the current convenience store?
Well, if you're looking at the building from the front, okay, there's all, there's a garage door in there now. That garage door will be eliminated, and it'll be an entrance on the left-hand side of the building.
Okay, so it'll be within the same building?
That's correct.
That exists, but it'll be partitioned and?
Well, also, there also can be a door with, if you go in the convenience store, you turn around and you pay for your gas, or you get a candy bar, you can also walk through a door in the standard account and also pay, let's get a coffee.
Gotcha, okay.
So it wouldn't be limited to, I'm sorry, it wouldn't be limited to a drive-through. It would be, you want to walk in and wait and stay in line, or it wouldn't be limited to just a drive-through. You're also accessible from the convenience store.
Okay. So then, so is this, is this like an independent coffee shop that you're, or do you have a?
Well, it's kind of like, you know, the horse before the cart. I mean, you know, my mother-in-law, she works at a local place, a local family-owned place, and she's thinking about maybe coming in. I mean, I haven't got to those issues yet, just trying to clear the hurdles first.
Okay, thank you.
And it'll be a one, one, one window, that's a, you know, multiple windows, one window?
It's drawn, it's drawn out with one window.
Thank you.
John, does that, exactly, what did he give up as far as uses? Set up to three uses?
About half a million.
How many, how many uses were given up and what were they?
Well, no, and tonight, so the zoning ordinance amendment that took place in two thousand, I'm sorry, the zoning map amendment, limited it to certain uses.
Right.
We're asking that one use be added, and then one of the uses was a used car block, and up to thirty cars. He's agreed to reduce that down to five cars.
And the most I've ever had for sale on four hundred is maybe two.
This, you guys went to planning already, right? And it was a, it was unanimous approval?
That's correct.
All right, are there any men who else from the audience wish to testify on this matter? All right, are there any more questions from the council or? All right, so then I vote for a motion to close the public hearing.
Simmed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved five to zero. And is there a motion to amend the zoning map to modify the limitation on uses for the property at seven oh seven Point Judith Road, flat Y four, lot four, zone BB and R eighty?
Simmed.
Second.
Discussion. And this would be a first, is this a first, we put a first reading on in two weeks?
That's correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Best of luck.
Great to meet you guys. Good night. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. A motion to receive and place on file a recommendation from the planning board. Is there a motion?
Um, somebody's.
All right, Jesse and then Patrick. As we had a motion from Jesse to put, receive and place on file a recommendation from the planning board, a second from Patrick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. And a motion to schedule a public hearing to amend section four point seven of Marigat's zoning ordinances in accordance with recent FEMA flood insurance rate map firm updates.
Simmed.
Second.
Discussion. We're looking at scheduling this for the first meeting in January of two thousand twenty at eight P M. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion approved five to zero. A motion to refer to the planning board for review and recommendations.
Simmed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion approved five to zero. All right, item number twenty-two is going to be withdrawn, is going to come back next month, so we'll be moving on to the open forum. Please conduct yourself in a really respectful fashion. Comments of citizens who are using this portion of our meeting are not adopted or endorsed by, by what is heard as requested. The, I just had a couple announcements first of all. One is, we, the Bike Path work session that we had before this meeting, we're going to continue that work session on November sixth at six P M. The location will be determined. We're going to look at what else is going on in town while that day. So at six P M on November sixth, the Bike Path work session is going to resume. And we've also received word on Friday that Carlos Motto, who was buying the larger portion of the old IGA building, Gilbane IGA building, has not signed and is not going to sign that purchase and sales agreement, so the council is going to be having to look at that and deal with that at its next meetings in November. So I had to announce that so the public was aware of that. Is there anyone for public comment? Open forum. Richard.
And this is a repeat of what I asked at the Bike Path meetings, but it's a general observation that I have seen too many errors made by not having a properties committee, whether it's for the bike path, whether it's for the library, whether it's for the senior center renovation, whether it's for the roads. We must have a property committee for each project we entertain. The bike path is especially frightening because we have taken it on ourselves, which means if we go over the three million dollars, we either have an incomplete bike path, or we have to ante it up. And from the beginning, I don't care what the capital project is, we must bring the best people for each capital project from the community who can give input, can get the project under physical control, can get the project under fiscal control. This must start immediately, not like the school bond, the athletic field issue, which the property committee came in, not too late, did a very good job, but it would have been great to have these talented But it would have been great to have these talented people at the beginning of a project because this is where you need the expertise. So this is a plea that we find some sort of a process and policy which says each capital project must have a properties committee which is appointed when the project starts.
Thank you. Richard? No, it's a Richard. No, Richard Smith? David Smith, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dave.
My name is no longer David Smith.
Sorry about that.
My name is David Smith. My wife Rosemary and I reside at 24 Castle Road. And we have championing completion of the South County, William C. O'Neill South County Bike Path since 2007. We have advocated finishing the South County Bike Path with an entirely off-road path through Canachia Farm as the safest route and the best walking and biking experience. We were instrumental in getting that route onto the 2017, 2008, uh, 2026 Transportation Improvement Program and helped secure the Green Economy Bond Fund to construct the first quarter mile behind Narragansett Elementary School with a link to the community center. We still believe it is the best way to finish the bike path. But with the recent amendment to the Transportation Improvement Program, reducing the budget by $5 million, we know a path through Canachia Farm just ain't going to happen. But we also know that the proposed alternative route resulting from the Rhode Island Department of Transportation readiness assessment is far from a final design and it faces challenges, including permitting for wetland crossing, designing a route on town roads that provides safe use for pedestrians and cyclists while causing minimal disruption to residents, and even dealing once more with national grid easements. But the biggest challenge is time. If the town in Narragansett does not respond soon to the proposal and begin working with Rhode Island Department of Transportation to create a reasonable and workable solution, the $3 million will disappear. It will be allocated to some other transportation priority. It will not simply be pushed out to later years. It will be gone. There are no more earmarks. Connecting, but if there are challenges, there are also some opportunities as the $3 million can also cover connecting safer routes to school multi-use pad now under construction at the Pian Middle School and the high school with Sprague Park, the elementary school and the South County Bike道. Calming traffic and reducing the vehicle speeds on Long Pathmont Streets. Improving pedestrian safety at the east end of Narragansett Avenue along Lake Canachia. Advancing the creation of a linear park along Boston Neck Road. Linear park has been in the Canachia Farm master plan for at least five years. Integrating the bike path with the planned coastal Rhode Island bikeway from Wickford to Narragansett Pier with improvements to the DAFAC bike road on Boston Neck Road. I simultaneously tell you that time is short and add more things to the to-do list. But our area town council will begin moving on this opportunity to complete the William C. O'Neill South County Bike道. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Carolene?
Carleen Townwood Hill Road. I've said this before, but I think it warrants repeating. Patty Ockright and the staff of our library write grant proposals to get private funding, not taxpayer dollars money, to do such things as replace carpet or buy furniture. These could have been expenditures that the library board put in their budget request. Instead, they save the taxpayers a lot of money by obtaining outside funding. These are also expenditures that could have come from the reserve fund and would have spent it down. Does any other department in town do that? I don't ask this to diminish the value of any other department, but only to show that we should be applauding the efforts of our library staff and not punishing it by cutting its budget. Another point that needs to be brought up again is the contribution made by the Friends of the Narragansett Library. Just this month, the Friends authorized the following expenditures out of its coffers. Up to $1,000 for a camera system to prevent further theft from the library. Up to $400 for a festival of lights performer. Up to $175 for a living literature holiday performance. The $500 fee for a reference librarian to attend an assisted, assisted technology conference, thereby increasing his skills to pass on to library staff and patrons. Up to $250 for the purchase of a needed, needed card table and folding chairs for ease of use and transport when activities take place outside the library's four walls. Up to $250 for school vacation week activities. To me, these would also be legitimate line items in the library's budget or withdrawals from the reserve fund. Instead, the Friends organization subsidizes the programs and needs of the library with some pretty outstanding fundraising activities. The jewelry sale in May raised more than $14,000. There will be another sale this Friday and Saturday, so come one, come all to help us raise money to support programs at the library. I guess my point is that I don't think any other department in town has a volunteer group who tirelessly and unselfishly give their time and energy to raise funds for a department, thereby saving taxpayers even more money. And once again, I have to say that these efforts should be applauded and the Narragansett library should be afforded the same respect and consideration the other departments receive from Matt, Jill and Ricky. Finally, I would like to thank Susan Amoruso for nominating our wonderful library and its staff for the Reader's Digest Nicest Place in America contest. Did you know that there were 1,100 nominations? Regardless of our differing opinions about the future location of our library, I hope you will all join me in applauding the staff, the wonderful women and men who make the Maury Luchan's library such a welcoming place to visit, one of the best in America.
Yes.
Lord your amen. She's being started through the Philco Road. Now that Mr. Carlos Muta has pulled out the deal to buy the Belmont IGA marketplace, Matt, Jill and Ricky, you now have the opportunity to return the Belmont IGA marketplace to the new home of the Maury Luchan's Memorial Library. You have the opportunity to return democracy to Narragansett and to follow the will of the majority of the voters in 2016. We now have the $5.8 million bond. We have almost guaranteed $2 million reimbursement by the state. We have close to $1 million in corporate donations. And we have more than, or coming in, we have close to and more than $2.1 million in private donations, and this is growing. People are, the residents of Rhode Island and Narragansett are donating money to the project at the Belmont Building. All of these funds are based on the new library at the Belmont IGA building. This whole situation is a no-brainer. You claim to be saving money. Look at all the money that's available to us if you would just follow the will of the voters from 2016. It's time for you to take the right action. It's time for you to put your legacy in a positive position. And it's time for you to be courteous and gracious and thank the Maury Family Foundation for their matching grant of $500,000. You refused to thank them before, and I think you should be gracious and thank them now. Thank you.
So I just want to comment on a fact. So it's mentioned 2016 that the voters voted for this bond for what you're saying is the Belmont Building. No, they voted for a bond. Belmont was not in the picture. Please, you're going to keep bringing up 2016. Well, 2018, there was an election and the people voted for a bond. They did not vote for the Belmont Building in the 2016 election. It's very clear and that should be noted. And I will keep repeating myself as long as you want to keep swapping or trying to switch it to that 2016 was voted for the Belmont Building. It wasn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Stanley?
Stanley Choski, Narragansett. Been here for over 20 years and I'm so happy to hear council persons talk about taxpayer interests. I recently had some documents that I saw that Social Security has determined that the appropriate increase in Social Security will be 1.6%. Last year it was 2.8%. So I think coming on budget time, instead of thinking about a 3% increase, we've got to start thinking about a 1.6% increase based on the federal government issues. And I think one of the places I want to target is fund balance. It's come to our attention about fund balance, fund balance over here. And when I, when I heard, and I thank you, Councilman Leavitt, that we had a fund balance of $904,000, nine, almost a million dollar fund balance in the library situation, I just couldn't sleep for the next two weeks. And I missed, how many other places have I missed fund balances? Excess funds. I really think, I'm hoping that you will now investigate all departments throughout the town and give me a, get a list of all fund balances and excess monies that are out there, listed appropriately so a dumb guy like me can see it. $904,000, like a million dollars. That really shook me quite a bit and I hope we'll fix it next time around as we look at our financial situation. Thank you.
Thank you. To anyone else? Yes.
Joan Mulligan, 59, Bow Run, Saunders Town, Narragansett. I read your brother Chris's letter to the Narragansett Times that was published on Friday and I found it disgusting. The vindictiveness and viciousness in this is incomprehensible. And he was writing about a town resident wrote to the letter, wrote letters to the paper to disagree with your actions as an elected public official. Now, should every resident who comes to this podium to address their disagreements with your actions worry that they may be a public target of the Mannix family? This is the annihilation of democracy in this town. The only solution that will guarantee freedom from fear of repercussions of disagreeing with you is for you to resign as town council president. I suggest you show self-respect and respect for this town by submitting that resignation.
Is there anyone else?
I actually, I'd like to ask for an update. Jim, at our, at our last meeting, one of the very last things we, we asked, we directed you to speak to Olus, to ask if they would, if the library fund, the library board trustees would give back to the town the necessary funding so the town can be fully funded. Would we then be able to stand it and would they accept this from us? What'd you find out?
I, I did speak with Olus over the phone and I brought to them exactly what Mr. Lima had discussed at the previous meeting, whether the funds were transferred from the surplus to the town and subsequently if the town council voted to appropriate them to the library, then yes, they would be qualified for state aid from Olus.
What, what is the current deadline for, for putting in a waiver for the town?
I've already informed them that it was our intention to do that because I don't want to see the town lose the money November 1st.
Have you spoken with the library board trustees about this? About what Olus said in response to your question?
Yes, I sent an email out and we discussed it.
So will we be receiving the money back to our funds so we can go ahead and fund so that the patrons of the library will be able to use the library uninterrupted?
I have not been informed of that by, by anyone of the trustees.
So they still have time?
I believe so, yes.
Until November 1st?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jim, just to follow up on that. I believe the board sent over a proposal to basically a deal to transfer that money back. Is that correct?
The board said what their wishes were, yes. An email was drafted and distributed to the Olus and the council and the trustees.
Okay, so that would be basically the ball in the court of the council this time to respond to that?
That's the council's decision.
Okay, great.
For the ball in the court of trustees court. All right, is there anyone else?
Lori Kelly, Wildfield Farm Road. I don't see how it's in the library court because we've made two proposals, one which was rejected, one Mr. Tierney just said we've all received. No comment from the council? I mean, we're waiting to hear from you. What's the comment?
All right, thank you. We, we...
None of back and forth. It's hard to, it's hard to have a negotiation.
For nine, oh, you want to talk about that? You have repeated the same thing and tried to berate and get exactly all of the, there was no discussion of compromise. So yes, I know council members are looking at your proposal, but don't come here in the spirit of compromise. It's disingenuous.
What's disingenuous is for Mr. Lima to read numbers at the last council so that Stanley stands up and says there's 904,000. The money donated by members of the town and members of the state to the library was not to pay the salaries of the library. And that money is the, is in that 904,000. I don't know whether it's on purpose you're saying that, Ricky, or you don't understand the differences.
Ricky has said 660, 904 has been mentioned in time as the undesigned fund balance.
2015 unspent, 274,000. Well, maybe you should go back and look at what money came in in 2015. It was a Maury Luchan's memorial fund. There is also money that's on the Rhode Island foundation. This is just you disrepresenting what is in that money.
No, no. 904, I can bring the finances up here and stop your gamesmanship. I can bring her up. 904 was never put forward. 660 was, no, in budget. 904 was never discussed.
Well, in the 686, there is also fines and interest and donations to the library.
904, we did it because we know the difference between designated and undesigned fund balance.
Not when Ricky made that disinformation last week.
He has said 660, 650 was the number, but 686 has been the number that we've made discussion.
He said 904 and now they've expected town to 686. That's what he said.
This is why we can't work with you.
So the...
I think we should think about removing Lori Kelly from the board of trustees.
Oh, I welcome you to do that.
That's what we should do.
Exactly, deformed. You've removed people from every board and refused to make people who speak out on the library issue. And it's been very clear to all of us. library issue, and it's been very clear to all of us, so I'll await your decision.
Thank you. Is there a motion to retire to executive session of the town council in accordance with Rhode Island General Laws forty-two dash forty-six dash four and forty-two dash forty-six dash five subsection A, collective bargaining litigation? Review of, review of municipal union contracts in accordance with Rhode Island General Laws forty-two dash forty-six dash five subsection A two.
Simo.
Second.
All right, um, is there a roll call for?
Richard Lee, aye.
Joe Mulligan, aye.
Matt Mannix, aye. We, we're moving on. Go ahead, I didn't see his hand, go.
I'm gonna call him when this is...
Go, Jesse. Ironhead.
Well, he's ready to speak.
Ironhead.
We're gonna ignore him.
I didn't see his hand.
Well, we see it now.
Ironhead.
You're not gonna call him?
Jesse, ironhead, is it a session? What, what is it?
Why won't you call on the public?
Motion approved, void is there. Thank you.